Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Councilmember Jenny Geisler. Today, we're talking about both the Monday, March 4th and our Tuesday, March 19th City Council meetings. Thanks for coming in today.
Absolutely. I always like doing these. It's a lot of fun.
Yes, we always like having you. And I did mention, we had a Monday meeting this month because we couldn't have a meeting while the polls were open on the presidential nomination primary.
Correct, correct.
So yes, we had a little bit of a Monday meeting, but both of these were actually fairly short.
Yeah, and I was remote for that one too, but we had a lot of fun.
Yes, you were, you were. But you did join us, so we're happy about that. We're officially now into spring, I guess, as of last night, right? As spring started at like 10 o'clock on Tuesday night, but now it's like, we haven't had much snow for winter, but so now we're gonna have snow for spring. Is this the deal?
I think that's what the plan is for the next four or five days, yeah. But it hopefully won't last long.
Yeah, hopefully not. It'll keep our plow crews busy though, and they'll be out there on the roads taking care of things, depending how much snow we get.
Correct, yeah.
All right, well, let's jump into things here. We're gonna start out talking about our Tuesday, March 19th Council meeting, one of the first items there, a fun one. We had several firefighters in to be recognized.
Yeah, it's always great. We do this with both our police officers and our firefighters. Anytime we have new members, we do what's called a badge pinning. And you know, so their family member will do the pinning and they take an oath of office. So we have three new firefighters, Chad Martin, Matt Hool, and Ryan Specken. And so they're new to Coon Rapids, but we also had one promotion. So Adam Pisert is now moved to a fire inspector. So he's gonna work with the city fire marshal, and they do work to make sure the inspections are done. And then also, when we do Fire Prevention Week with the schools, he'll be helping to run those things. So it's always great to see all of the firefighters or the police officers, because the whole crews that are on duty come, and all the families, and the council chambers are packed, and then we finish and then they go away.
Everybody leaves.
Everybody leaves, but it's great to have them here and recognized, because it shows the partnership that we have between the council and our service staffs that protect and serve our community. And it's just making sure that everybody understands that we're all in this together and we're a family.
All right. And I don't know if we're unique, but I guess the way this starts, we call them career firefighters, but they normally start as a paid-on-call member of the fire department, and then those folks get promoted into the ranks of the career or the full-time firefighters.
Correct.
So we had three of those. So they've been with our department as paid-on-call likely, but they're new as far as full-time firefighters.
Yep, and they've done their probationary periods and everything's good, so we welcome to the team.
All right, we wish them all the best. Moving forward, we have some other exciting news on this agenda. People are kinda pumped for this. I don't know where I've been, but council approved a full-on-sale liquor, Sunday liquor 2:00 a.m. and tavern license, as well as gambling premise permit. This is for Jelly Bean and Julia's Barbecue.
Correct.
They were in Anoka previously, but closed.
They were in Anoka, and so they have closed, and they've now moved into, depending on how long you've been with Coon Rapids, you know, it started out as Mr. Steak, but it's 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard. And so they're going to have barbecue, not right away, they said, because the smoker doesn't come until April. And the liquor, obviously, they have to get the license finalized. We just did that vote this week. And then they have to get all of their kitchen permits and all of those kinds of things. But they were gonna look to do a soft opening on this Thursday, the 21st. And so you can get burgers, you can get wings, you can get soda. Barbecue and liquor are coming, but we're happy to have them in the community. I'm sure Anoka is sorry to see them go, but that spot has had, it's been a challenge for the last few years, and we're thrilled that they're gonna be in the community.
Yeah, I felt a little bit like they're being pressured to open ASAP is kinda how I felt. So they're like, "All right, we're gonna do a soft opening, starting Thursday, March 21st." So again, yes, they won't have the wings yet, right? Because they...
No, they won't have the smoked barbecue.
Smoked barbecue, okay, because they're waiting for their cooker to come in April. I know they posted that on Facebook.
Yep, so they'll have burgers, they'll have wings, sides, and then again, once all of the liquor permits get processed, then they could have liquor, but they will obviously have soft drinks.
All right, well, it sounds like a lot of folks out there are excited for them to come to our community, so we welcome them. And it is kind of a trip down memory lane when you look at that property, because I was also recalling Arnold's was there.
Yep, and Grumpy's.
Grumpy's, yes, that's what I more recently referred to as, but it was, isn't it been the North Bar?
Northern or North Bar.
And then something in between Grumpy's and that. There's been quite a few.
It's been a little bit of a rotation of different businesses there, so we're excited to have them in this location and think it'll be great for the community. It's nice, and I saw some posts on Facebook where, "Hey, I can go walk to a place," you know, "in the community," and those kinds of things, I think are great for the neighborhoods.
Yeah, and that's the thing, when it's close and all that, of course, there's gonna be things in the Riverdale and all that, but when it's close to home and can kind of be your little local hangout.
Yep, it's kinda right across the street from Mr. Schwarmah's Grill, so there'll be a couple places in that neighborhood now.
Yeah, all right. Moving forward, council considered resolutions reallocating the 2023 general fund budget and amending the '23 and '24 budgets. This is something that is done on an annual basis.
It is general housekeeping. And you know, so when we have, you know, here is the budget for maybe a department, and then they have the little sub departments, and it's, you just balance it out. So everything ends up being a zero, but you make sure that all of the expenses and what was money budgeted, that they match. And so we take care of that housekeeping about this time of the year. And then the other thing that we do is we do a carryforward change to the budget of 2024 for things that we've had on order, and we all know things are taking longer to get delivered than what you'd always like, but since they were in the '23 budget, we just moved those funds into '24, so we don't have to start the whole ordering process again, but we can continue with the order that we've already placed.
All right, got that housekeeping done.
Mostly housekeeping.
All right, sounds good. Council considered an agreement between CTN and the St. Paul Saints.
And to me, this is just a great thing for our community about how, you know, we do the cable shows, we do this show, and that there's a lot of ways for our citizens and our community to get information. And to be able to do that, it costs money. And this is one way that we can ensure that we're keeping up with the great equipment and being able to provide the services for the community, because there's going out and generating revenue. And doing the Saints games are fun, and our team does a great job with them, so we're thrilled. And this year, it's a two-year agreement versus one year, which means that everybody can plan of what is it gonna cost the Saints and what revenue are we gonna get from a city perspective, and it just makes everything work nicer. And so we'll hopefully continue, and I think the relationship started, they were saying, about 2007?
That's what it sounds like.
With a couple of years maybe off, but we wanna continue this great relationship.
It's been a while, and it's gotten more exciting as the Twins have become a minor league team and all of that. They've got a lot of follow with the Twins partnership there, and so exciting to have them on cable sometimes, sometimes they're on broadcast channels, so watch for that. It's a two-year agreement, and we are excited for that. And like you said, the main point for us, and I don't know how many people know that, is we are funded exclusively at this moment from franchise fee that's paid to the city, 5% on cable bills, and a peg fee, which is $2.00 in some sense on each monthly bill of people that have Comcast. So that is our funding, that is what allows us to do the program in for CTN. So as folks have sort of been switching, you know, a lot of people have gone to streaming apps.
As people have cut the cord and gone to streaming, and it's a different way to get your news. And what's hard is that the funding sources haven't necessarily kept up to speed with how that content is getting delivered.
Yes, yes, so important, it helps balance out some of the loss that we're seeing here as far as cable subscribers and looking at other ways to make some revenue.
Exactly, yep.
All right, that is all we had for our Monday, sorry, our Tuesday, March 19th City Council meeting. We'll jump back to our Monday, March 4th. Again, one day early due to the presidential primary. A couple items there we want to talk about. First, council approved or adopted a resolution accepting an active transportation planning assistance grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Anytime we see the word "grant" on here and "approved," you know, that's great.
Well, it's wonderful, you know, and I commend our staff. Our staff does a great job looking for things like this. This is a $100,000 grant that can be used for planning and assistance, so you know, anything that we're looking at, you know, our sidewalks, our trails, you know, any of this transportation planning, you know, for us to be able to get this grant means that's money we don't have to put in, take from the general fund, that we don't have to levy for. And so we're thrilled to be able to accept that grant, to be able to continue forward with a lot of projects.
All right. Council approved final payments for Project 2165. This is our new fire station three. They actually did the move right at the beginning of this year.
Right, they moved in in January, and for those of you, and I've gotten a couple of calls, if you go by, you'll be like, "Wait a minute, why is there a pile of concrete?" And so yes, we were looking at final payment, and there was some issues with the concrete that was poured at the site. So the big, large pads that the trucks go back and forth on, and so that is having to be redone. It's all being taken care of through legal contractual kinds of agreements. But you know, just let people know that the fire station is operational. We got a tour of it last month, and it's just gorgeous. And you know, there's these little fine-tuning things that we have to fix the issues with the concrete, but that should be done. The swarm weather has allowed them to go a little faster than what we were thinking, because you need to have some warmer weather to be able to do the concrete correctly. You don't wanna be doing it in the winter and have the potential same issues that we were having.
All right, well, it was nice to see them move over there. Obviously, they closed up the old Fire Station 3 on 113th, and we've yet to hear what is happening with that.
Yeah, there, what we've looked at, so there's gonna be questions of how is that zoned, is it single-family, is it multi-family? But there's a couple of different parcels, and apparently, because it was there for so long, all of the legal language of what are the actual legal descriptions of the land aren't necessarily jiving, and so that paperwork has to get finished and fixed before we can start to do anything about selling that land or combining parcels or rezoning it to be able to have something happen on that site. So we're a ways away from that, but we wanna make sure that it gets done right.
Yeah, but likely, something will probably go there, right? Unlike, Fire Station 2 still sits, the old Fire Station 2, off of Foley.
Off of Foley, yep.
Is pretty much still like it was.
Yep, there's a lot of things that are stored in that fire station, yeah. Where Fire Station 3 has a number of issues, and it's why we built the new one, because it just, to be able to use it for something else, we would've had to put millions of dollars in, and it just wouldn't have been up to snuff of what it really needed to be to be able to reuse it. So it's very likely going to be torn down at some point, and the land would be sold to a developer, and some sort of development would come in. And obviously, anything that goes on that site would go through our normal site plan process, through our planning commission, depending on the kind of proposal. Sometimes, some of those things come to council, others are just approved at our planning commission.
All right, well, save the date for this fall, because I gotta look at what the date is, but Fire Open House is actually going to be at Fire Station 3.
Yes.
So if you wanna take a tour, I shouldn't have said this, but I think it's Saturday, October 12th, I believe, is the correct day.
That sounds right.
So October 12th, 10:00 to noon, it'll be at Station 3, the new station this year, so you can tour that. Previously, the couple, last couple of years, we've been at Sand Creek Park.
Yes.
But makes sense to have it in the new station this year.
Yep, you know, and the station, you know, is, you know, updated, and like, we even got the tour, because the roof of the fire station is done and protected, so the fireworks go off from the roof of that fire station, which means that we get them above the trees, more people can see them. And so if you come see the fireworks, you're gonna enjoy the fire station.
Yeah, exactly. All right, moving forward, council adopted a resolution to apply for an outdoor recreation grant. Again, that grant word is here, and this one is, we're actually applying for this.
Right, right, this is an application, and so to do the application, part of it is that the council has to support the activity that this grant would be funding.
Okay.
And so with that, we're looking at improvements at Al Flynn Park, which is the park right kind of behind the old city hall. And what we want to do in that park exceeds what our current budget is for the park. But with this grant, it would allow us to do the full plan, you know, being able to have more ADA acceptable, accessible, you know, so that rubberized surface in different areas and a lot more place structures for the kids. And so that park is gonna be on a hold a little bit, you know, until we hear the outcome of this grant, because we wanna be able to do it all if we get the grant and can do that, versus having to do in a couple of stages.
All right, well, if there's anything we do know, our parks are well utilized in this city, so people would love to see improvements there, I imagine.
Exactly, yep.
All right. Moving forward, council adopted a resolution accepting a grant, grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and approving the water quality cost-sharing agreement. What's this about?
Yep, so again, it's a grant. It's money coming to us from some, from another entity. And the Coon Creek Watershed is making sure that we've got quality water in our area. And so with that, one of the pieces with this is to look at, it's called Leaky Sanitary Sewer Investigation Project. So that would be, they use cameras and they'll televise into the pieces of the sewer pipe that is not city, but goes to homes to make sure where they're seeing issues in groundwater, to see if there's any leaks or something like that, to be able to try and identify where improvements can be made to keep the groundwater clean and fresh, right? And so there's that. And then the other is, it's a portable trommel screening plant.
Okay.
What that basically means is when you see all the street sweepers that come out, there's all of the debris that gets picked up. And with that, there's this tool, I guess, lack of a better term, that will separate out the organics, you know, the leaves and sticks and things, and the sand, and then the actual garbage, to be able to make sure that only the garbage is what ends up going to a landfill, you know, and that pull out what could potentially be recycled. But so you get the organics into where they can be recycled as an organic, or the sand can be reused. And all it is, is it's about how do we keep and be more, better stewards of the environment? And so this is a grant, and then there's a cost-sharing where we pay part and the Watershed District pay part, because these are things that will help protect our water.
All right, I sometimes think water is one of those things you don't appreciate until it's not there, right?
Yep, exactly, yeah.
All right. Moving forward, council adopted a resolution supporting a Minnesota Green Corps application.
Yep, and so we've got our Green Corps member, Kate, and she's here as part of that grant. And so from a city, we just make sure that she has a desk and a place to sit and, you know, paper and pencil, whatever they need that way, but the Green Corps has her working here, and then she helps us with any of our green and sustainable kinds of activities within the city.
Yeah, we've done some stories with her. She was digging through the trash when they had to try to find things that shouldn't be in there. And they're actually doing right now a food waste reduction challenge. Starts April 1st, and people can sign up online if they wanna take part. I believe it's six weeks or eight weeks, one of the two, and try to teach you stuff and try to reduce your, what you're throwing away.
Yeah, and to that also, you know, we do within our recycling center have the organics collection. So you know, if you get their either blue bags or orange bags or green bags, you know, you can buy them on, you know, online. They're heavy-duty, and then it's, you know, your food waste and paper kinds of things. And we're adding some more collection bins, like, I think I just saw that there's one being added to Sand Creek Park.
Yeah.
So people can get that waste into the organics, you know, so there should be drop places in their neighborhoods, and that again, keeps it out of the landfill.
Yeah, all right, well, it's great to have this position, and they're always doing something new, I feel like, at our recycling center, and look for more to come in the future. All right, council considered and received a lawful gambling report and authorized a payment to the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. We actually had a presentation at this council meeting about this.
Yeah, and this is something that I kinda prodded them into a little bit last year, you know, just making sure that we had a good financial report from this group. What happens is, the city receives 5% of the lawful gambling, and then of that 5%, we take 10% for the stays in the city, and 90% goes to this organization. This year, that was just over, or almost $94,000. So it's a considerable dollar amount. And what we had them do with this presentation was just really highlight the greatness of this organization. It is made up of volunteers, they do, they support the concert series, they support the Fourth of July, it's these funds that buy the fireworks, they support Rocky's Pumpkin Patch, the tree lighting, there's a number of things, you know, that they do for the community. And felt that, you know, needed to make sure that more people saw the great work that they did. And then on the flip side, needed to make sure that the council, that we had the oversight to ensure that, you know, funds were well-used, but also to make sure that they were gonna have enough funds to be able to continue all of these great events. Because, you know, what I don't wanna have happen is at the end of the year, it's like, "Wait a minute, we don't have funds to be able to do a tree lighting, and then we have to cancel it," or that people come to the city and we have to try and find, can we budget for, and we haven't budgeted for it. So it's making sure that, as a partnership, that they do a fabulous job running these events, and we wanna make sure that the funding goes to them to do that, but we also wanna make sure that this money is well-spent and that we're planning to make sure that we can continue delivering these events for our community for a long period of time.
All right, I know they do have a website, the Community Strength Foundation, so you can check it out. Always looking for funding, obviously, donations and volunteers.
Exactly, exactly.
All right.
Wonderful.
Council received the 2023 Community Development Annual Report, and it was, I believe, about 14 pages long, if I recall, something like that.
It's great, it's online, if you wanna read about it, and Matt Brown, our Community Development Director, shared it with us this year. And if you look at it, you know, we think that we're a fully-built-out city, but there were 6,600 permits this last year, $95 million of construction activity within the city. That's phenomenal, you know, so people are coming here, people are growing here, people are doing work here. And he added a number that I thought was amazing, since 2012, $1.5 billion of investment in our community through this community. And that just means that we're a thriving community, that we're, we can be growing, and that we're working and trying to make sure that what we have here is good for everybody. So, and that if you can read the report, it talks about our homes for generations, our front door, which we just on Jan, January, March 6th, did the drawing for the $5,000 grants, you know, 105 people were selected. We talk about the sustainability programs that they've got with the smart irrigations, native plants, energy squad visits, all kinds of things about what we do to help drive in the community. So it's a fabulous report, and you can see what are the great things that we're doing for our city.
All right, check it out.
Yep.
All right, moving forward, council approved a joint powers agreement for the mill and overlay of Egrit Boulevard from Coon Rapids Boulevard to the BNSF tracks, and this is an agreement with Anoka County, correct?
Correct, yeah, and so it's just this small little piece of Egrit between Coon Rapids Boulevard and the tracks, right by Fire Station 1. But Coon, Anoka County is doing more on the Boulevard, and so with us being able to do this slice, we can actually do it cheaper, because the same contractor is there, already doing everything else, and so we'll manage our piece, but it just is a good deal for us, because we can get it done less expensively, because the contractor's already there.
Yeah, I know they've been working more to the west on the Boulevard, it seems like Hanson West to Anoka, but I guess now they're gonna do that part probably from Hanson over to Egrit or so, this year.
Yep.
Almost road construction time, we're getting there.
Almost.
All right. Council adopted a resolution related to utility rate changes.
Yep, so with this, there's gonna be rate changes for water, sewer, and stormwater. Each one of those utility, you know, so our utility funds, and what's unique about those is they generate their own funds for all of the project work. So, and when we look at the city, there's, we're starting to have to look at updating the infrastructure from the old water iron mains that were put in probably in the 50s, maybe? So they're, they're getting to the point where they have to be redone, and it's very expensive. So we need to be looking at changing these rates to ensure that these funds have enough money to do those projects as we come up. And when you, when you look at all of these increases, you can talk percentages here or there, but it's basically, it's less than a dollar a week for the average household, you know? And, and while we, none of us on the council love to raise rates, we also don't wanna see our infrastructure crumble. We need to make sure that we're keeping our city vibrant and that the infrastructure's good for many years to come.
Right, and like you said, these are self-sustaining funds, so they need to pay for themselves. You guys actually, the city hired, was it Ellers or someone did a report?
Yes.
Like, two years ago or so, but, so this is a planned report, or they're gonna phase this in over the coming years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll look forward to more utility rate increases, but like you said, when we talked about water, we don't appreciate it until it's not there.
Not there, exactly.
All right, those are all the items we had to talk about. This is kinda interesting, because we're sitting here, it's Wednesday, March 20th, at 4:01 p.m. as we were saying this, and the Coon Rapids Boys Basketball Team is actually tipping off right now at the state tournament.
Yep, I wore my Coon Rapids colors, just to make sure. And, you know, they haven't been to state in 41 years, since 1983, and we just wish them the best and are so excited to see them be able to perform.
Yeah, so we wish them luck. They were actually sitting in this studio Monday night on sports night with Joe and Howie, had the whole team in here, so it was cool to see that. And again, we wish them the best at the state tournament. One thing we're kinda sad about, we've learned that Jensen's is closing.
Right, you know, Jensen's has announced that they're moving over into Champlin, they're gonna keep their bakery and some of those other pieces, they're not gonna do some of the grocery food. But if you watch Facebook, there's all kinds of things back and forth, and you know, I think Councilmember Armstrong has been really pretty good and clear with his responses to make sure of what really is truth there.
Yeah.
Bottom line is, that's private property. The people who own that area have the right to do with it what they choose, so if they look to sell it to some sort of developer, we would, we're ensure, sure that there would be some conversations with the city planning staffs, to be able to look to say, "Hey, this is what we're thinking about, is this acceptable to the city? Would, you know, any rezoning that would need to happen be there? If there's any TIF funding that would need to happen, any of those kinds of things." The city is absolutely open to those conversations, to work with the owners and what they choose to do. But just wanna make clear that the city is not directing what happens on that place, because we can't, we don't own it.
Right.
And the city, we're not planning to buy it. So, but we certainly would support anything that would, that that development would wanna have happen.
All right, and Jensen's has told us they don't have a firm move-out date yet, but they plan to do that sometime in May, is what they're telling us at this point, and opening as soon as June in Champlin. All right, quickly, let's mention organized hauling briefly, because you guys have been talking about that since fall.
Yep, and so we had the surveys and everything that came through, and what we as a council decided is that we're gonna step back from organized hauling, but we're gonna move forward with looking at things that we can strengthen the quality of services. So when a hauler gets licensed within the city, we're looking at what are those rules? What are those regulations? What are those expectations for those haulers? And to be able to be more definitive and precise and things that we can, you know, track and count to ensure that any waste hauler who's active in our city is providing good service to our residents. So that is the initial plan that we're looking at, trying to decide how would we craft that, with the intent that if we can do that, and we also probably wanna limit the number of licenses for haulers that we have today, and not add more haulers to the city. So those are the couple of things that we'd be looking at doing in the next, in the short term, but not look at doing anything for organized hauling in the near future.
All right, 30 seconds, the rec book.
The rec book.
You should've gotten this in your mail by now.
It is phenomenal.
If you haven't.